$60,000 as we speak. And in the ideal circumstance, they would be applied to the purchase price for the respective purchases at closing. We have been endeavoring to obtain due diligence on the property. I received the appraisal a couple of days ago and have been in the process of reviewing that. We also are waiting for the environmental assessment of the property. It appears that there will be no recognized environmental conditions that would need any sort of further investigation or remediation, but that is not in hand yet. And this is Thursday, the 28th of October. Do you have the survey in hand at this point? And of course, we have the inspection of the house. Then we also have the letter from the county health department, what they call the time of sale determination, stating that the sale authorization for the sale of the property is denied due to the absence of a septic field. And then also, there's an abandoned well or cistern up near the house that also would need to be closed before they would approve of the sale of the property as is. And it just came in last week. So we're close to having all of our due diligence together on this. But still have, you know, the ESA yet to obtain and to review. As I said, I'm still reviewing the appraisal. Hopefully, the ESA won't have any issues, but you know, I always review those and make sure that we have a clean bill of health from our provider on that.
Barry, let me interrupt you just a second. Have you gotten any clarity on what they referred to as something coming from across the road from those guys?
Not on what that was, but I heard from ASTI Environmental is our provider for that service. And they indicated, I think it was yesterday, that they had received a document that they had been seeking from the state Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. You know, something came up in some record search that they did is what I gather it happened. And so they did a further investigation into that by contacting Eagle and received the documentation that there was nothing to be concerned about on the Rens property. So whatever it was, I don't know that yet. They just said they got the information from Eagle. It's not a problem. So that's why I say I expect it to be a clean ESA, but we don't have it in hand yet.
Okay.
So there are some things to be received. There's some things to be reviewed. There's some things to be worked out in terms of the well and septic on the property. And so I yesterday asked our attorney, Mr. Fazio, to contact the estate's attorney and inform them that we would like to request an additional 60-day extension to the inspection period. In addition, the original close-by deadline is December 31 of this year with a similar optional 30-day extension for SIO to say, you know, we want to kick it into January of 2022. And we haven't got to that point yet, but I expect that we would do that when we got to there. And so we've also requested an additional 60-day extension of that deadline currently, January 31 of 22. And indicated-
Okay, Barry. Are we talking 30-day extensions or 60-day extensions? In either case?
For these, so the original contracts allowed for 30-day extensions. We've exercised the 30-day inspection extension in the, for the purchase, the closing was additional 30 days from December 31st to January 31st. We've requested now 60 additional days in both cases. So the inspection period would go, if they accepted this, through the end of December. And then the close-by date would be the end of March of 22. So that request was made by Fazio to the state council yesterday afternoon. He, the state council heard the request, said he was going to confer with his, with his client, obviously, and get back to us. And in addition, I sent an email to Pam Martin, the personal representative for the estate, Mr. Renz's daughter, and listed all the things that we've been doing so far. We've made, you know, really great progress, not only on all the due diligence stuff, but I emphasize that we've got, you know, formal commitments from the state and federal grant programs for the easement. And we have recommendations from the Green Belt Commission and the County Farmland Committee, ALPAC, to contribute one-third of what remains after the state and federal grants. And we don't have that number yet that's based on the appraisal. And of course, we're reducing the size of the property from the original 110 acres down to about 101 acres. So that will change those numbers for the state and federal grants and the township, city and county contributions as well. Nevertheless, those two other local partners have recommendations from their committees. And so once we have a final number, I can go to staff and say, we need $412,000 or whatever it is. And then that will go on the city council agenda for the green belt and for the county parks commission agenda for the county parks nap program. So I indicated that in my email to Pam and that, you know, we're making enormous, you know, progress here in a very short period of time with coming up with all the information that we need to do this deal and all of the funding for it. And that's why her attorney will be contacting her and informing her of the request through Mr. Fazio of the request for 60-day extensions of the inspection period and for the closing deadline. And haven't heard back from either one of them at this point. That was just yesterday afternoon, you know, not even 24 hours ago that actually Joe called me at sometime after five and said he'd spoken to the estate attorney. And then it was yesterday evening that I wrote that email to Pam. So no response on that yet. And then as Joe and I were talking about this last week, he asked the question, which is why we're all meeting today. That's just sort of all the background for you at this point. So as it stands, the contracts say that at the end of the inspection period, again, that's this coming Monday, we, it's basically Fisher cut bait. If we do not want to proceed, then we can notify them that we are withdrawing our interest and those two purchase agreements will become ineffective at that point. They would no longer be valid. As it's written right now, if we do not make that election to terminate the contracts, then the deposits that we have provided become irrevocable. That is, they can still be applied to the purchase prices at closing. But if we do not succeed in closing, again, that's, you know, now with our, you know, the original 30-day extension, January 31st of 22, if we did not close by that time and there were no other extensions granted, then they would be able to keep the $60,000. And we would just lose that in essence. So again, we're hoping that there will be understanding of the great progress that we've made and support for granting these additional extensions. Fazio's question was, what if they don't? Do you want to move forward or not? And if you don't, then we can just notify them that we're not moving forward. If we do, there's this potential risk of losing $60,000. And his question to me was, who makes that decision? And I said, we've never been in this position before. I don't know the answer to that. And that's when I contacted Will and said, I think we should have a special meeting of the LPC and have some discussion about this and determine what the course of action would be. Since it's township funds, I would think the board of trustees would have to weigh in on that. And since, you know, there's no meeting scheduled, that might as well entail yet another special meeting for the board of trustees, which I'm sure people don't want to do. But that was my thought, but I'm opening that up for a question at this point. So it's, you know, how do we feel about wanting to proceed, given these current circumstances that may change in the next couple of days, but they may not? And if they don't, then do we want to proceed? And if we do, are we willing to risk the money? And how does that, in the form of a recommendation to the board of trustees to say, we think we should go for it anyway? That's what I don't know and the reason for calling the meeting.
Barry, I'm curious if the attorney for the family, the estate, wanted to, shall we say, play hardball and still intend to go ahead with the sale, but not grant the extension, thus ensuring they tuck $60,000 into their pockets no matter what. Is that a likely scenario, do you think? Is that ethical for an attorney to take that position?
Um-
We have attorneys here who maybe have an opinion too.
It is a possible scenario. You know, that could be, you know, the estate's response, you know, relayed through their attorney that we have a contract and you guys get to choose whether you want to go through with it or not. That is one, that was one very possible outcome. And it is what it says in the contract. So I guess in that sense, it is ethical. We agreed to it.
There, there is a problem with the house though, right? And the health department saying that, that property can't be sold as is, right? That's the estate's problem.
That's correct, because in the purchase agreement that we have, it states that under the section called seller's representations, there are no uncorrected violations of any building codes and regulations, health codes or zoning ordinances affecting the property. Well, their lack of a septic field and the, the open cistern on the property is a violation of the health code, as evidenced by the letter that they received and forwarded to us from the county health department, indicating that those things were insufficient. So yes, that needs to be addressed. And I did some research and had a conversation with the county health department staff person a couple of days ago and got some information about how that can be handled. But that's something that we still need to discuss and finalize with the estate. Now, can that be done in the next 48 hours before our inspection period deadline, as it currently is constituted, closes? Maybe. But that's something that they, you know, we have to work out with them. How are we going to handle that? You know, they could choose to install a new septic field at their cost. But there are other mechanisms permitted by county health. And basically you apply for, what do they call it? Permit of some sort. A replacement permit, which essentially means that they would hire a contractor to come out and, you know, dig holes, ideally within the three-acre building envelope that we've identified on the survey at this point. And in the presence of a county sanitarian, have them say, that one's got sand, that one doesn't, that one does. And to map that out and say, here are places that are approved septic fields for the future. And then there is a amount of money that is put into escrow for the construction of that future field at some future time. And when that occurs, then the estate would pay for that. So-
But arguably, it's in both, it's in our interest, the township's interest and the estate's interest to extend a bit. The question is whether they will or not.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yes, actually, absolutely true, Liz, is that it is both parties' interest to extend. And I'm hopeful that will be the case, but the question before y'all is, what if they don't?
Yep.
Is it possible that the crane that was observed on or near the property today, when was it that you saw it?
It was about four hours ago, and I'm wondering if it is exactly what you're talking about for the soil tests.
Well, that would be quick action in these day of supply chain problems.
I've seen no indication of that. I would think that the estate would know-
I took a picture. Let me look at it.
Barry, OHM was seeking permission to have the northern 10 acres have soil boring done on that part of the property. I'm wondering whether that might be what's going on because they wanted to do it either late last week or early this week as part of their due diligence.
Lisa, Jaclyn was just saying that the township's engineers, OHM, had sought and gained access to the north part of the property to do some soil borings for the potential future fire station out there. So that may have been what you-
Oh, and it was at 10:06?
I've had no indication that the estate is endeavoring to dig for other septic fields in the vicinity of the, of the house. There's been no emails about that. And, you know, the communication is largely between Fazio and the estate attorney, but I get copied on a lot of emails, maybe all of them. And so I'm party to it.
Where's Fazio's office?
101 North Main, Ann Arbor, Michigan. Northwest corner of Main and Huron. The large brick building.
I wonder if it's worth showing up.
Barry, I wonder if I could just float the question. I mean, you know, we've all expressed a strong commitment to this property. And I know that the Renz Trust has, has already given us a discount over their appraisal of the market value. So, you know, they might feel like they've already made concessions. But I guess, you know, on the one hand, like, is there anything that would really make us think, no, we don't want to pursue it? And, and if not, as we're looking at the possible risk of 60,000 in deposits, is there any way to think about, is there any other incentive we could offer them to encourage them to give us that extension? And if not, is there any way we can meet a January 31st closing, given that we're still processing the due diligence? So three questions.
Good, good, good questions. So it's already pretty tight and would be very challenging to have that closing occur by January 31. So the process is for us that, once we have all the due diligence in hand and everything's been satisfied, that is, there's no recognized environmental conditions in the phase-one ESA, and there aren't any title issues and so forth. If some of that, all that stuff is in good shape, then I ship that all off to our local partners and in the easement language and the baseline report. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff that goes into that. And then that our local partners have theoretically up to 60 days to review whatever I provide to them. And sometimes they act within that 60 days and sometimes they don't. So if that was done Monday, say, that's the end of December. And then once they all sign off on it, then, and including us, if they make comments, we have to say, yes, that looks good. And if there's anything that, I don't think is going to be the case, but there's changes to the easement, for example, then the federal program would also have to sign off on that. And then all that stuff gets shipped to the federal program for their final review and approval, and that could take another 60 days. So, you know, can we compress that down and get it all done in 90 days? Maybe. It'd be tough. So we would really benefit from having that additional 60-day extension. I think we can get it all done by then, you know, by the end of March. But as it stands right now, pretty tough. There were a couple of things in the purchase agreement that Fazio noted that he thought the estate might request as a change in exchange for the extension. One of them is some sort of relief on this violation of the health code regarding the septic field and well. Now, I'm not sure they could do that, but that was one thing he thought, if they could get away with not having to cover the cost of putting, you know, if there's no sand out there, it could be a $50,000 cost associated with that. And they actually, you have to put one and a half times the amount expected for the cost of the installation into escrow. So it could be $75,000. If they could avoid that, they'd like to do that. So, and there was something else that he said also, that in his review, he's like, I'm a little surprised that we, that they agreed to leave that in the, in the contract. And so that's something that could happen if they could come back to us and say, we're willing to consider your extension, but can we change this or this? And then we'd have to respond to that.
But we don't want to offer that to them upfront. We want to get their, their answer, I guess, first, right?
Yeah. For the time being, we've just said, can we have 60-day extensions? And left it at that. And they respond, you know, affirmatively without any other request. They may say, we're willing to do that if we do this. They might say no.
What do you all think about the option of telling the family right away that we cannot, and Jaclyn, I'm thinking of you, we can't risk giving up $60,000 of the people's money, of the township's money, and we need to have a reply on the extension by Monday? Or we're backing out? Because we can't risk the $60,000? Along with the thought that we don't want to back out, but because of all the things you said, Barry, we just don't think it's likely we can close by the end of January. And so we'd like to follow through on this project, but we can't risk the money.
My anticipation is that the estate will respond to the request, you know, by Monday. They know the deadline, you know, as well as we do.
Uh huh. And if they don't?
Then we have to decide whether we want to Fisher cut bait.
I'm new to this and still learning, but from everything I've heard, that, that we don't care about the house, right? We care about the land. So can we not worry as much about the septic and the well? Or is it because that is a requirement, whether you're going to use it or not?
It is a requirement.
Whether you use the house or not?
There is a structure. It was inhabited, is theoretically inhabitable. I'm not sure that anybody would inhabit it at this point, but, you know, there's, the water runs, electricity runs, and, you know, the roof is mostly keeping the rain out. So theoretically, it's inhabitable. And so the health department requires there to be a functional septic field to service it.
And that has to be done by closing? Or can it be done anytime? I'm just thinking, if the cost is $50,000 to address those issues, I'd rather pay $50,000 later than lose $60,000 and just, you know, move forward and deal with those issues later. It's just sort of a cost of doing business.
Yeah. So I, my, my current understanding is that that money, if they don't want to build a septic field down, which I could understand them not wanting to do, they'd have to put that money into escrow so that when either the current house is going to be occupied or a new house, if, you know, when somebody buys the property and says, this house is a tear down, but I want to build over here, that that site would be identified and that the funds to create the field would be in escrow from the estate. So I think that happens either way. Unless there's some other negotiation to be done there that I'm not aware of at this point. But, you know, we haven't done anything like this, and I've never done anything like this before. So I'm learning as we go here and stuff like that.
But that could all be done later, right? I mean, that doesn't need to be done before closing. It could be done later.
The, the construction of the field, my understanding is that it does not have to be done by closing.
Yeah.
That's correct.
But the money has to be in-
Correct. That's right. The funds have to be.
So it's almost like a wash then for the seller here in that they can keep, maybe keep our money, but they're going to have to pay for a septic field or put a deposit down unless their new buyer, if they're thinking of that, decides they're just going to knock the house down, in which case they would get the deposit back from the health department, presumably, right?
I don't know. That's a good question. I don't know how that would work.
I, I think they would, but yeah.
Well, if there's a building envelope that would indicate future presence of some kind of home or house.
I mean, if we were not the buyer, there wouldn't be a building envelope. It would just be 110 acres of land that a developer would buy.
Right. So, so that's what I just, I'm listening to you all, and I'm thinking, if we pull out, there, there are heirs in that group that would be only too happy to sell to a developer. And that's what worries me. They, you know, some would be fine with that. And I do see also value in the property for the fire station. It's valued to the township. So I wonder if that is a reason the township would want to undertake the risk of losing $60,000.
And that's one of the things I emphasized in my email with Pam is that all the funds have been committed. The 300 grand for the, the fire station piece has been committed by the board of trustees. And the federal and state grants are committed at this point. And then the other, the other ones are pending, just needing, you know, a dollar figure attached to them. So I want to really emphasize that with her. We've got all the money lined up. And we're also working with the American Farmland Trust to take the fee ownership of the property after the easement's in place. So that's all essentially lined up at this point. And, and yeah, we might, you know, need another 60 days to close, but that's, but we've got the funds. Whereas any developer that they're going to work with is going to say, well, I'll give you, you know, a million dollars down now, and then I'll pay the rest of it, you know, over some period of years. It'll be a while until they see that money, all of that money. And for us, it, you know, could be the March 31 of next year.
Would it be crazy, as a good faith, would it be crazy to just say, we'll share the cost of the well and septic? As a good faith gesture?
It's possible. Yeah, again, we've never been through this before. And so I'm, you know, going to lean on Fazio as, you know, the experienced real estate attorney and, and also negotiator for these kinds of deals. I, I think that's a possibility, Lisa.
But that's, at the present, that's not even on the table, is that cost? I mean, that's still the obligation of the sellers here as it stands in the contract. So there's, I guess, not understanding how the law really works, but it seems like the sale is obstructed by that fact from our perspective, if we want to play, you know, the rules of the township and the health department. So are they really entitled to that money if they haven't fulfilled the terms of the agreement? The money we put in deposit?
Yeah.
By having a violation of the health code, you mean?
What, by, by preventing the sale from closing on the expected date? Because, because of the violation? I mean, if, in a way, they could say, well, look, you know, and maybe, well, let's, let's suppose they really had a different view of this, and they decided that they knew about this problem and decided they weren't going to do anything about it, knowing that it was going to be a problem in the end. But if they thought they could still keep the money and not deal with the problem, you know, it, it just seems to me that it doesn't really work that way for them, but it does work that way for us. I mean, you're doing the due diligence. Your due diligence discovered a serious problem that prevents the sale without addressing it with considerable effort and money, at least, if not actual mechanical constructive action. And so isn't it right that we go to them and say, look, we really want to go ahead with this, but there's this problem? Now, in the sense that's bluffing, that's really not- Now, in the sense that's bluffing, that's really not what it is. And I don't think that's the way we do it. But in terms of the law, in terms of interpretation of the agreement, it'd be terrible if this had to go to some kind of litigation. But we probably should think of what if it did? Because I think it may be our will to go ahead with this, even with the risk of the money. We should know maybe the money is really not at risk.
So boiling it down, Will, it sounds like your question is, if they have not met their terms of the deal of the contract, which is to to meet all the public health requirements, then could they actually get the deposit money?
Yeah.
Well, Fazio should have a clear idea of that.
Yes, he should.
Did that come up in your conversation with him, Barry?
With Fazio?
Yeah, with Fazio, yeah.
Our attorney.
I mean, he identified the problem that existed in the sales agreement and said, this is our leverage in the deal. But did he take it any further to suggest? You know, that if they insisted that they were going to keep the money, this could actually be an obstruction to their keeping of money. The money now is in escrow, right? It's not in their hand. They can't grasp it until there's satisfaction on parts of both parties.
Yes, either.
Exactly this kind of reason, probably, right?
Yeah, it's being held by absolute title and it'll either be applied to the purchase prices of the easement and fee. Or theoretically, it would be provided to them if we don't close. But that's a very good question. And I don't I don't think Fazio and I talked about that per se.
Can we ask for the for that? For those inspections of the well and the septic by certified letter? So that we have a paper trail that if this doesn't happen by such and such a date, the money has to remain in escrow, just something to give them a deadline? By certified letter, it's like you could always say, oh, I didn't see the email or whatever.
Yeah.
And Barry, you mentioned that to, I forget the woman's name and the family, the Rens representative. Did this septic field obstruction possibility?
I did not in my email, but the letter from the health department is addressed to her and was forwarded to her attorney who forwarded to Fazio and me. So she's aware of the issue.
Okay.
So the question is, is is the estate in violation of the purchase sale agreement because of the health department that the problems the health department has identified?
And I mean, they're they're, you know, they're not authorized for the sale of the property at this point. But it appears that that can be satisfied.
Remedied, yeah.
By them putting one and a half times the cost of constructing a new field into escrow somewhere else. But that's to be a title company.
Uh huh, right. But but is that a Fazio question of Fazio question? Whether they are themselves not entitled to the sixty thousand because they're in violation of they, because the terms of the sale are not what they said they were?
But but I think that they can satisfy them
Okay.
by putting the money into escrow.
Okay.
That's that's my current understanding.
All right.
They they can they can they can satisfy that that statement that, you know, there are no uncorrected violations by putting the money in escrow.
Okay.
So it can be corrected at some future time.
Could it be that they're just not aware of the sense of urgency? And timing by which this needs to be done? I mean, maybe, you know, they're not trying to pull a fast one. They just didn't think it needed to happen so quickly. And it just seems like there's more to be lost by backing out than moving forward. And I'm tempted to have somebody just walk into Fazio's office and say, listen, there's a hard deadline and.
Yeah, that's what I was suggesting. Barry, you think there's any chance we can get Fazio on the call here right now?
He was not available at this time. I invited him to come, but he's he's not available.
So a scenario I've been thinking about as we get to Monday, right? Is that the contract? Is that the due diligence deadline Monday?
Correct.
And we may, I mean, maybe this will all go away at that point. Maybe the extensions have been granted and we're all happy and we're moving forward. And I'm just wondering, maybe today is too early to to be able to take the temperature of the estate. You know, I I'm hope, you know, I'm very optimistic that on Monday we'll have the extensions. They'll be signed by the by the the proper people on the other side and we'll and we'll attach it to the contract and have those extensions. What what where are we if that's the scenario? We wait till Monday and see.
Well, I'm I'm hopeful also. We're just trying to, you know, figure out what to do if if that doesn't happen.
So let's say we get to Monday and it's now noon and I'm assuming this is probably the deadlines close the business.
Correct.
Obviously, it'll be okay. So at that point, what would we need to do to, if we've determined that this extension is not going to be granted and it's not realistic for us to move forward? What do we need to do? I guess that's something we need to decide now because does it's not clear to me what how we would even back out. Who who would give us the authority to just to say this is done, you know, this this deal isn't going to happen?
Yeah, and that's one of the questions on the table. And given the such a short timeframe here, I don't think that that's possible for the board trustees to act on. And so, you know, is that something that, you know, Fazio and I determined at that point? Or, you know, is it with your input from today? That guides that decision? There has to be some written notice provided to the the seller indicating whether we're proceeding or not.
Well, let's just say that we we decide we're not proceeding. It's twelve o'clock on Monday.
Yeah.
What what does that mean? I mean, how do we notify? What's the legal method to say we are not proceeding? Is it a signed, we're not proceeding addendum to the contract signed by Barry Lonik and Will Weaver? Is it signed by Will Hathaway? Is it signed by Jacqueline and Will Hathaway? What? It seems like we need to be creative at this point and say, if this is at noon on Monday, if this is, if it's clear that the that the extensions aren't going to be granted, it it seems like, Barry, what we need to tell you is who to take the addendum to to, you know, let them know that we're backing up. Who's going to sign it?
Do we want to back out, though? Do we, why do, I don't want to back out.
This is this is the, this is what Barry's asking us. If we get to Monday at noon and we have no extension, do we proceed? Knowing that we may not be able to meet the contract, which is to close by December thirty first? If we can't meet that, we lose potentially unless they, you know, I think this is a good faith. We're looking for them to to say, yes, they want to proceed. If there's no extension, in my mind, that's sending a completely different message.
Isn't this sixty thousand dollars what's at stake here? We risk losing sixty thousand if we decide to go forward and don't close, right? Sixty thousand, but of course, as Will said, the the family's going to have to put in about the same amount to fix the septic field. So.
That's correct.
You know.
Or a developer.
The, uh, no, it's, it's, you know, yeah, maybe they can work that out. Maybe, you know, a developer would give them the money to do that, you know, maybe, I don't know.
But but, you know, is it the case that if we? How shall I say this? Basically, we are willing to put that sixty thousand at risk. Does that mean the deal is over? Or can we say, okay, our sixty thousand at risk, but we're still going ahead? We still have till the thirty first of December to finish the deal, right?
Of January.
Of January. So in fact, they're prevented from selling the property or doing anything with it until then.
That's correct.
While we can do what we decide to do. So we we have that that latitude, shall we say, of that timeframe to restructure the agreement, to further negotiate an extension?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I just, you know, I think the the most critical concern about closing on time seems to be the money from the American Farmland Trust. Is that right? Or do you think the county money and the city money are equally obstructed by the bureaucratic inertia that has to decide to spend it?
State and federal.
And the federal, that's right. That's the final one, isn't it?
Correct. Yeah, there's there's, you know, the good thing is that we have funding from four different entities contributing toward this. The other side of that, of course, is that they all have to approve of things. And that just, you know, takes some time. And theoretically, the city and the county ones happen simultaneously. But nevertheless, that's that's, you know, all those things have to be done. The 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 section on the inspection period states, by the way, that the purchaser shall have the right to extend the inspection period for one period of up to thirty days by providing written notice to seller prior to the expiration of the inspection period. And Fazio did that. The next sentence is, if purchaser and purchaser's sole discretion is not satisfied with the results of the inspections and other conditions for any reason, purchaser will notify seller in writing before the expiration of the inspection period, after which all sums deposited by purchaser will be returned to purchaser and this agreement will be terminated and of no further force and effect. So as I said, Fazio did the notice for the original thirty day extension of the inspection period. I would suggest that he's got the standing to do to provide the notice that we're not proceeding if that was something we were going to do. And Will's right, though. Even if we, even if they say we're not going to grant you an extension of the inspection period right now, and maybe not right now, the closing deadline either, we could still proceed with things. The sixty thousand goes at risk at that point. And we can still come back to them at a future time and say, boy, we just need another few days because the, you know, the federal program's got all of the materials and we're just waiting for them to, you know, sign off on it. So we're that much closer. So that's still an option going forward.
That's that's what I want to do.
Right there. Yeah, you know, if you think about it, all right, there's sixty thousand dollars, which is a tangible amount. But there's also all the other costs and the time, your time, our time, which, you know, is valuable too. So it would seem like it's a very parsimonious decision to think that sixty thousand dollars, which probably we're not going to lose because so far people have been acting in pretty good faith. You know, my feeling would be we should take the risk, even if the extension's not granted and and go ahead. But then it's not my sixty thousand dollars. Well, it is in a sense. I mean, it is our sixty thousand as taxpayers who are, you know, appointed to be good fiduciaries.
Yep.
We should pay for it, William, and we should be willing to give it up.
Well, we should, yeah, that we should accept the risk, I guess, as a way to maybe buffer that, you know, the finality of losing it. We don't know that we're going to be in that situation, but moving forward, in a sense, it's an act of good faith on our part. The idea that once we say we're not going to do it, I mean, I think it completely changes the negotiation status between the parties. It's no longer a matter of good faith. They won't agree. We're suddenly faced with deadlines that maybe we can't meet. I mean, it it gets, I think it goes better if we just accept that risk and they understand that. And there should be some concession. And I think Fazio is smart enough to, you know, extract that.
Yes.
I mean, I think, looking at the further possible values to the township of the fire station and the water infrastructure, both of which have been for a long time, indicated as this site really is very good. I mean, I think that maybe also supports taking a little bit of a risk to get this site because from the larger township perspective of the public safety and and infrastructure needs, it's it's a great site and it's hard to see what other possible substitutes are available in the near future. So, I mean, again, that's, you know, I take a sixty thousand dollar investment of public money very seriously. And I also think that we've been working on this. We've been putting in a good faith effort. And if we continue to do the best we can, you know, hopefully, yes, it's a risk. Hopefully, it's not at this point a large risk that we will utterly fail to close.
Well, just, let's just see a little caucus here. Do we have sentiments here that suggest we should not take the risk involved? And speak up, please.
I think we should.
I think we should move forward.
Is it unanimous among us? So do we, can we make a motion? Is that what kind of what you're looking for, Barry?
Well,
could I just say it is the township's money? So we can't, the the O C would have to make a motion.
A recommendation.
A recommendation of the township, I think.
And then here is the problem is that, you know, right now, we do not have a B O T meeting before the November first deadline. And at all, at this point, I think it's very unlikely that we could get quorum for a meeting on such short notice. So we can make a recommendation and perhaps we could submit it in writing. But the 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 board can't actually officially act, probably in time for what's needed. So I'll have to, I'll have to make an effort to figure out what we would do with their motion and recommendation.
Well, I wonder, Mary, what if we don't make a recommendation? But the consensus that we've just established here is that, you know, as far as we're concerned, we should go ahead. If we make a recommendation, put it in writing in the form of a motion, which becomes a public document in a sense, does that weaken our bargaining position in reaching for an extension?
To have a motion, you're asking?
Yeah. Yeah, i- if, yeah, if we make some statement of our willingness to go ahead and put the deposit at risk.
Yeah.
If if a, I mean, why aren't we just thinking about willing, being willing to convene again on Monday after we have a reply? Because we will know something important.
But in either case, we might want to do the same thing. That's my question. Would we want to go ahead in either case? Whatever they decide.
Yeah, I think we need Fazio to answer the question about, you know, what our leverage is, if we have any through the legalities of the environmental part of it with the health department. Don't we? Don't we need to to know what what our legal standing is with the contract?
Barry, I thought I heard you say that that it could be remedied if they put extra money in escrow without there being any violation, right, of the purchase sale agreement?
That's my current understanding, yes.
Yeah, and that that's what I was saying a couple of meetings ago. It happened with another person I knew very well who couldn't afford to put the septic field in himself. But the potential buyer came along and put the money up. I mean, anybody can put the money up, but put it in escrow. And the 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 borings were, in this case, it was backhoe that came out did the did found the sand and, you know, that was approved. And then the money, one and a half times the cost of the septic field was put up.
So on our part, they're they're putting money at risk because they're not using our escrow to do that. That's money they have to come up with as a group of people in order to defeat our purchase arrangement, which maybe they don't have to put up if the whole thing goes through and we complete the sale within the terms of the agreement. So they're, they've got a lot at risk as well in that arrangement.
Could you give us a a motion, like language? If we were to adopt a motion, could you just? If we were to adopt a motion, could you just give us motion, uh, a rec, uh, language for a recommendation to the board? Just throw it out there and see what we think about that?
Off the top of my head.
Yes.
Sure. Um, that the, uh, uh, LPC recommends to the Board of Trustees, uh, that if the RENS estate, um, denies the request to extend the current, uh, deadlines for the end of the inspection period and for closing.
Okay. For end of inspection, okay, okay, go ahead.
Um, that, uh, that Scioto Township, uh, not uh, exercise its uh, ability to terminate the purchase agreements.
Okay.
To read, read that again?
And, and instead proceed, uh, with the purchases as, um.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you reread it?
Um, so let me read that, um, and, you know, we could tweak the language a little bit, but just see, to see how this sits with everybody. Um, this is a motion, possible motion, that the, um, LPC recommends to the Board of Trustees that if the RENS estate, um, denies our requests, denies, um, the request for an extension, to extend the current deadlines for the, um, for the end of the inspection period and closing, the Scioto Township not exercise its ability to terminate the purchase agreements and instead proceed with the purchase of the RENS property. So Barry, would you like to adjust that in any way or have your thoughts on what that sounds like?
Yeah. I, I'm just trying to think as a negotiator. If I'm Fazio or Barry or whoever's finishing this out, I think that weakens the, our representative's case. I, I think that's giving, you know, what, what would be the right word? It's, it's, it's divulging our hand. We have the ability on Monday to back out. I want to see them in good faith to extend the extensions. I think it's reasonable. I think it's, it's, uh, uh, it's, um, I don't know what the right word would be. It's a professional way of going forward, uh, in a land negotiation. Let's wait to see what card they're going to play. I can't see their hand. But they will play a card between now and Monday, close of business. Let's see what card they play. I don't want to like, uh, give them, you know, oh, here, here's an ace. Maybe this will strengthen your hand. This is a negotiation.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
And I think that gives, gives away a point that we have, which is we're willing to stay in the game till Monday and wait for an extension. What we're going to do on Monday, we don't know, but we can meet again. I, I ju, I just, I, I, we haven't, no one has said anything that convinces me that they're not going to give us an extension. Let me just put it that way.
Well, we just don't know. Yeah, it would certainly be prudent, you know, on their behalf, but, you know, uh, you know, their attorney, uh, played some hardball in, in putting in the, the deadlines, you know, originally stated for the inspection period of October one and the closing of December thirty one. And, but we, we agreed that, you know, there could be one thirty day extension. I think actually we originally had a sixty day extension and then they cut that back to thirty days and, and we agreed to that.
You know, on second thought, I think Hob's right because if we have to put out something like this, then we are telling them, you can have the sixty thousand.
Right.
Um, we're going to go ahead with it no matter what. And so may, I think we don't want to do that, maybe.
But, but I do think that it's useful for us as a group to have that in language that we kind of know where we're going to go if we have to.
I agree.
So I, I think, uh, I'd like to think of this. And thank you, uh, Will, for calling the meeting. I think it was appropriate. But I think we can think of this as making sure that the LPC members, and in the case of Jacqueline, a Board of Trustees members, is staying, um, informed and educated in terms of where we are with this negotiation. And I don't, I mean, I don't think there's been anything easy or easy to understand, you know, from the beginning. So, I mean, what else is new? Here we are, we're, we're doing it again. We've got eight different scenarios and we don't know which one will play out. But, uh, I appreciate Will and Barry and then the rest of you for coming to a meeting, uh, which we didn't, you know, even know was going to happen until two days ago. So, um, I feel informed. I don't feel like we need to make a motion at this time.
I do.
I'm hoping that Barry on tomorrow, that, that they've decided the extension and all of this has been, you know, uh, hand wringing has been turned off.
It's, it's the close of business on Monday, right? Yes, correct. So there's all day Monday too, and we might not know until, you know, noon or something like that. They might need the weekend to, to, uh, get in touch with the family, whatever. But, um, I think that we should, um, agree to convene again if needed on Monday and, uh, at three o'clock or two o'clock or whatever time. And, uh, we, we should have the card in our hand by then. And perhaps, uh, Fazio can give us fifteen minutes of his time on the same call. I, I, I can find out from him, you know, when he might be available Monday afternoon. Um, the, the bylaws, by the way, specify that the special meetings may be held as required. Uh, if the call of the chair or any four members, members shall be notified at least forty eight hours in advance. It doesn't say, uh, you know, forty eight hours within a, you know, the, the business week. So theoretically, you can call it now, um, and establish it and then just cancel it if it's not needed. Um, or we could wait until, uh, noon on Saturday.
Yep.
Let's call it now.
Seems like the easiest thing to just call it now and then cancel if needed.
Well, except we don't know about Fazio's availability, which would be a real asset to our understanding of our options. Um, so Barry, what is your ability to contact him and just work out this kind of a thing, a schedule and appointment?
Um, I can call him this afternoon.
And then, um, establish a time that you could share with us and, or share with me? And then I'll put together the necessary, uh, agenda and post it with the township?
Yes.
All right. And I, I, you know, like this meeting, I guess it will be an open meeting. So it is important that we get that, you know, meet that qualification.
Correct.
Uh, Jacqueline, uh, again, I know we're all so vigilant about what we can discuss and what we can't discuss, not in an open meeting format, but can you tell us how aware the Board of Trustees is of the concern that we have about this issue?
I am not sure that we focused on the timing fully in our consideration of the property. I, I mean, that was certainly brought up around the ten acre, um, or the nine acre purchase for infrastructure. But I don't know that it was brought up in the context of the deposits, that were at play, so, um.
So in the case of a hypothetical issue of importance with a deadline prior to a meeting of the Board of Trustees, is there an accepted mechanism for members of the Board of Trustees to be made aware of a pending circumstance that was timely and might require some action on their part?
Well, so we would have to call a special meeting and.
It's covered by the same forty eight hour notice?
Exactly. And so the, the problem right now is I don't know how we get all these pieces to work because if we honestly don't hear until Monday, uh, what's going to happen, then we would need forty eight hours. But by, by the time we had the forty eight hour notice, then the time would have passed. So, uh, I guess I'm going to need to check with the supervisor and our attorney about how best to proceed on this. Um, I, I'm, again, I haven't done this before, so.
Well, w- we've got an attorney, you know, who acts on behalf of the township, and that's Fazio.
Well, Fazio is our attorney who acts on behalf of the township for our land deals. But we have a different attorney who advises the township around meeting and notice, you know, all this sort of general issues. And so I guess I'm feeling like this might be a situation where I need to check with him about how the board could proceed in considering an issue like this with a very tight timeline.
Uh huh, well, um, maybe you do that. We, uh, see if Fazio can, uh, meet with us on Monday and, and Barry can let us know if he has a conversation with Fazio and there's any new information from that. And, uh, if we hear anything from the other side as well. In the meantime, I've got to get off pretty quick here, folks. That's why I'm talking right now. I've got, um, I've got a doctor appointment I got to get to, um, even out here. Uh, but also, I, I think a meeting for me would have to be two thirty or before I'm, I'm free. I'll be home on Monday and, uh, I'm free all day up until about two thirty, three o'clock.
Okay.
So.
Well, we're all here, Will, and you need four, as I understand what you said, Barry, you need four board members to say, yes, we need to have a special, special meeting. So I will, I will make a motion that we have a special meeting. Schedule it for one thirty this coming Monday, which is November first, to discuss this further. That's my motion.
I second that.
All right, any further discussion? All right, I guess we should vote on that motion then, one thirty meeting on Monday.
Yes.
Yes.
Marty, do you want to say something?
No, I, I want to say yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Jacqueline?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
And I am yes.
Good, so I'll call Fazio this afternoon. I'll notify him that we've got a time at one thirty. If that's not available for him, I'll let Will know and we'll see if we can change that. Probably something a little bit earlier to accommodate Tim's schedule and to see if he's heard anything from them. He hasn't sent me any email about it, so I'm guessing not. Um, but I'll ask him to make a follow-up call tomorrow uh, to the estate attorney.
There was one other quick motion that we wanted to consider. Um, I, taking forward the LPC's very strong recommendation that whatever of that nine and a half acre parcel that the township acquires for infrastructure, whatever of that is not used, be put back under conservation easement, including if any part of that deal falls through and some part of it or all of it is used. I have been advised that the best way for us to do that is to, uh, pass a, a motion stating that intent that we then pass on to the Board of Trustees, asking them to ensure that that gets accounted for. So Barry, you had drafted the language of a motion and I just wanted to make sure that since I heard that very loud and clear from everybody that we passed a very clear motion to that regard that we can pass along.
I'd like to make that motion.
Can you, can you read the motion, Barry?
I will try.
Okay, or do you want to send it to me? I mean, Jacqueline said it really clearly. I just didn't write it down.
Well, you, Barry had really clear, concise language that he had suggested when we talked about this.
Okay, all right.
If I can find it real quick here.
Yeah, Barry, I don't remember where we have that.
I think it was just in an email. In the last couple of days. I had a lot of emails to you, Jacqueline.
Okay, wait, I got it. Uh, a motion to recommend to the Scioto Township Board of Trustees that the nine point five acres of the RENS property to be purchased for the future site of public services remain in agricultural use until such time that construction of facilities commences, that the impact of construction and operations be limited to as small a footprint as possible, that those areas impacted in construction but not needed for operations be restored to previous conditions to the extent possible, and that the areas restored and not needed for operations be protected from further impacts through conveyance of a conservation easement or other form of board restriction.
That's the exact one that I wanted to make. Thank you for.
I knew it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And I'll send you that language too.
So I'm just, Jacqueline, I think you seconded that. Okay, here, I'm gonna go. Hob?
Yes.
Jacqueline?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Tim?
Tim, yes. Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Um, and I'm yes.
All right.
Let me, let me, uh, tell you something real quickly. That I had a conversation with a, an area farmer recently, just talking about the various ways the Land Preservation Commission is meeting. And this is a young family that, uh, would be, you know, interested in the future, possibly, of, um, acquiring about half of the RENS property and possibly even rebuilding that house. And, you know, anyway, there, there is, um, I, it, you know, it's possible attractive proposition for farmers in the area. That's all.
Yeah, all right.
I agree, Tim.
I, can we use this same link on Monday?
Uh, probably, yes, yes, it, it does.
Okay, good.
Jacqueline, could you send me that language?
I just did, Liz.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
All right, uh, we, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
By Tim, second by Marty.
Okay, Hob?
Yes.
Jacqueline?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Wiseman is yes.
Okay. Thank you all, I'll keep you posted.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
See you Monday.
Good to see you. Bye-bye.